All right, well, my clock says seven o'clock, so I'm going to get rolling here, so I'm gonna, Paul, you got your flag ready?
I'm all ready.
All right, so I'm gonna call this regular meeting of the Bethel Board of Selectmen to order for Tuesday, January 5th, 2021, and what first, I want to wish you all a happy and much better new year than the old new, the old year that's outgoing, so if you will please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic.
Which stands one nation.
One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going here, there's two things I want to let you know about. Number one, I see we have some of our fire volunteers on, on the line with us tonight. Item number 10 on the agenda is approval of the Fire Commission. We put this in the agenda as a placeholder, but we don't have the language yet, so we're gonna table that item. So Chief Baker and Chief Murphy, if you were waiting for that, you can, you can take the night off. It's, there's gonna be no vote on that tonight. We, we only got Marty the materials relatively short time ago to start crafting the, the final language that we're gonna present to a, a public hearing, so we don't have that ready tonight, so you guys can go have a cup of tea and watch some TV if you feel like rest, then watch us.
Okay.
About that, yeah. Was somebody trying to get my attention? Okay, all right, I'll move on. Also, I wanna make a motion to add to the agenda. We're gonna, this will be item number 11, even though we're just gonna table item 10, but I missed this earlier, the charter requires that we, that the Board of Selectmen vote to establish the date of the annual town meeting, and that vote should take place no later than January 15th, so we have to do that tonight, so I'm gonna make a motion that we add to tonight's agenda as item number 11, consideration of date of annual town meeting. So I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second from Paul, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries, so that, that will be item number 11, that'll be the last item on our agenda, and it'll just take a couple of minutes. So moving on to item number two, public comments, is if there's anybody on the line tonight who would like to share anything? And I don't think we have anybody there, so I'm gonna move on to First Selectmen's report. I'm mostly gonna share some COVID information.
Matt, you skipped correspondence, I mean, there.
Thank you, is there, then, is there any?
There's not, but you might wanna just acknowledge it.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you for that. Senator Chris Murphy stopped by the office today to have a conversation with our Health Department officials and with Tom Galliford, and the topic was the rollout of the vaccine. And mostly what Chris wanted, what Senator Murphy wanted to impart to us was that the federal government, in, in his words, has not taken a very proactive role in, in the distribution of vaccines so far, as you've seen in the press. The vaccine rollout is, there are far fewer doses available than were originally anticipated before the end of December, and there's, there's, for some reason, we're not sure why, there's not a real good answer, only 10% of what was anticipated has been distributed to so far. Ironically, Connecticut is one of the leaders, we have, according to the Governor's Office, Connecticut has vaccinated 2% of its population, which is one of the highest in the nation. Now, right now, those vaccines are going to medical personnel, frontline medical personnel, nursing home staff, and now we're into the 1A group, which includes first responders, so police departments, volunteer and paid fire, EMTs and paramedics, and those are underway right now. The response in Bethel has been very good. Bethel itself has not received any vaccines. We will not until we have authorization to open up our own clinic. That is anticipated to occur sometime this month. The goal is to have it up and running before the end of the month. We will share the cost of that clinic with the town of Reading, and we expect to be able to vaccinate several hundred people a day once that opens up. Now, that's gonna, that assumes that we're gonna get enough vaccine to do that many, but that's, that's what Senator Murphy is gonna try to help us with. The rate in Bethel, the rate of infection have peaked a couple of weeks ago following the Thanksgiving holiday. It is starting to come down. The, the highest we were up to was a rate of 70 new infections per 100,000 population, we're down to 47.1 in the most recent figures. So two weeks ago, we had 76 new cases, last week we had 54 new cases. So the, the post Thanksgiving peak has kind of risen, and now it's tapered off, and we're really hoping that we do, we don't see another peak happen as a result of Christmas and New Year's. As I mentioned, our clinic is, was just authorized by the state of Connecticut. Some people have been asking us, why is it that Danbury resident, Danbury first responders are getting their vaccine before we do, you know, things like that? Some people have called in, they, then they've noted that on the national news, if you've watched any of the, the national news programs, you see people in line in states like Florida, which now include the 65 and over group, and we're not there yet. There are a couple of reasons for this. Number one, as I mentioned, we're not able to vacci, to vaccinate people in Bethel because we have to get a permitted clinic set up, and that is underway right now, and it was just signed off on by the State Health Department, so that's why we're hoping to get that up and running before the end of the month. But in the meantime, our police and fire and first responders are being vaccinated at Danbury Hospital because they do have a permitted clinic, obviously, they're a hospital. But the reason you're seeing differences around the country is that not, the states are not required to follow CDC guidance on how they distribute vaccines. So Connecticut is following one set of protocols, that they've kind of developed using the CDC guidance. Florida is doing their own thing, but it's creating a lot of confusion, and for that reason, we've set up a COVID vaccine hotline, which went live today for the first time, and we've trained a couple, we got a couple of folks who are trained and, and been given the information so they can answer questions when people call in. To further add to a little bit of confusion, some of the neighboring towns around us have decided to put on their websites a place where people can sign up to receive the vaccine. I think Brookfield has this in place, New Milford just announced it, and New Fairfield has it. So people have called our hotline and said, well, if Brookfield is taking names already, and they're gonna start vaccinating people, so why aren't you? So the, the disconnect in the information there, just so you guys are aware, is that those towns are not able to vaccinate people yet either. They don't have the supply, nor do they have clinics set up. What they've decided to do is just take names and put them on a list for future reference. We're not gonna do that until the state of Connecticut tells us exactly how they want to distribute to those folks, because we don't wanna do busy work and create peoples, put a list together with people's names and create false, false expectations if the state wants to do it a completely different way, because they do have their own database. So we might be responsible for capturing those names, or we might, it might be that people and our citizens just call into a separate number. We haven't been told yet, so that's one of the things that we're waiting for the state to straighten out. So that is the status that we, as we, as we sit here today, things going in the right direction. Again, hopefully they stay that way. And one of the things I did want to mention, as you noted, we just put the establishment of the annual town meeting date on the agenda. It's still not known if the Governor's orders concerning town meetings are, will still be in effect when we get to April, when we would normally have our meeting. I'm proceeding as if it's going to be a normal budget season with a town meeting and a referendum. That could be the case, it could change, but we're gonna just assume that we're gonna go back to the, the normal way of doing things, and we'll see, we'll see what the numbers look like and see what the Governor has to say. So that's it for tonight. Richard Paul, do you have anything to add or any questions?
Yeah, I agree. Matt, you know, being, being in this medical industry for 40 years or so, I just want to avoid one thing on this COVID thing, is it be an absolute rush to Town Hall? I guess that's, Town Hall's, I understand, is gonna be the place for, where we're, we're gonna do vaccinations. How are we gonna prevent a massive number of people coming in, you know, when you're, you're only limited to so many doses? Because I, I know each vial only has about five doses in there, and there's a time limit on the expiration, once it's, once it's been reconstituted, because my daughter has been doing this throughout Connecticut as a pharmacist, okay? It's been a problem in some areas, so I'm just wondering, how are we gonna avoid this?
Yeah, you know, that's a really good question. I'm glad you brought that up, because Laura and Tom and I had a very long, extensive conversation about that today. Matter of fact, we had a meeting this morning to discuss that issue. Probably the only thing we can do is set it up by appointment only.
No.
And, and we're going to have to take appointments as the vaccines come in. And one of the other things I forgot to mention is, before we can open up our clinic, we have to get the right refrigeration equipment, as you know, Paul.
Correct.
I think that, from, from what we've seen around the nation and, and other states, the worst thing you can do is say, okay, we've got some vaccines, first come, first served. That's what you've seen in Florida with miles and miles of cars backed up with people waiting for like eight to 10 hours at a time. So this is one of the reasons why we don't wanna start taking names until that issue is clarified, because there's going to have to be a pretty robust and reliable appointment system, whether it's online or, or manual, but you can't just open it up and say, okay, come on in, folks. It's gotta be controlled so that we have people come in as, as we.
You don't, you don't, you don't want mass panic on, on your hands there. You know, the other thing that you should be aware of, that the Pfizer product, okay, requires something like a, a, a super freezer, like negative 80 degrees, whereas the Moderna, it's a standard free, a standard freezer, okay, and the upcoming AstraZeneca product, which is coming out of the UK, I believe, that is a regular refrigerator temperature. So, you know, if you can find out which type of product are you gonna get, you don't have to put that heavy, heavy investment into a super freezer, okay? Because it's only the Pfizer product that requires the, the super freezer. There's a couple, couple other things that you mentioned about adding to the agenda, and I would like to add three more items on the agenda. First thing is, it sort of parallels in what's, for item 11, the date of the annual town meeting.
Yeah.
It really parallels with this charter revision preparation for the referendum. I know, I guess Marty's gonna be, the individual is gonna structure whatever we're gonna put on the referendum for the charter revision. You know, this is already January, you're, you're looking at April, so it's three months away. I'd like to get this, at least, at least the ball, ball rolling in that direction. I, I don't know how, my other select, Richard, and you feel about that, but the charter revision, it took quite a bit of time, and I just don't want to, you know, pass up on this thing, because I guess, but we're limited to, we, we've gotta get either approved or rejected by, was it May of this year?
Well, so do you wanna put that on?
I do, I do, that's one thing. So that, that'll be probably item number 12, okay? Do, do we need a vote on that?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do you want a second? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that's item number 12.
Well, the number 13 is, I've got January appointments for boards and commissions. On my side of the aisle here, we submitted, I believe, in January, I guess a couple of days ago, a list, and these are for, you know, some of the things like the Commission on Aging Ethics Commission, Library, et cetera. I've got a list right here, and I think your office must have received it.
Yeah, you know, Dan brought that to my attention yesterday, and I asked her to hold off on that because I, I don't have the list from the other party.
Okay.
I was gonna put that up. We, we do, you'll notice that item number eight is consideration of appointments to the library.
Library, right, I saw that.
Because that one we got, but I, I wanted to wait till Nick Levy turned his list in.
Okay, fine, but we'll do it at the next meeting then.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and then, then my last one, which is my favorite subject, okay, I'd like to talk about the police station's firing range. You know, I, I think I've, tonight, I, I, I'm really ready for this one. I'd like to discuss it with the Board of Selectmen, some of my thoughts.
Okay.
Okay, number, number 12, so I'd like to put down something on the, the police station firing range building.
Okay. Discussion of. Okay. All right, was there a second to that?
I'll second.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that'd be item number 13, okay?
Good, that's it.
That's it?
No.
Okay, very good. All right, moving on to item number five, consideration of the meeting minutes of the December 15th meeting, I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
Second.
Okay. So Rich, Rich made the motion, Paul seconded, any changes, any, any corrections, any comments?
None.
Hearing none, those, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Item number six, consideration of application for deferral of tax assessment increase for 86 Greenwood Avenue. This is the Carol Ouzie property, and we have Janice and Mike, Janice Christianeck and Mike Boyle from the Economic Development Commission. Janice or Mike, would one of you like to just take us briefly through your recommendation from EDC?
Go ahead, Janice, why don't you lead it off?
Sure, hold on, let me just, I might go off screen for a second.
Right.
Um, but I just wanted to read a letter from the EDC. Surprise, hold on one second, let me just get it up. So, and I will just, I will just summarize the recommendation. So Carol Ouzie's had applied for a five-year deferral of 100% of the project cost for 86 Greenwood Avenue. Based on the EDC's review, they were only eligible for, they were only eligible for, hold on one second. Let me just get to the... Sorry, I'm just pulling this up. They were... So they were eligible for 100% of the increase for a period not to exceed two years versus the five years that they were requesting. This was based on the project's cost and the ordinance language, which states that if it's over $3 million the project's cost, they are eligible for seven years, even though they only requested five, but if it's under $3 million, they're only eligible for the two years. So the EDC is recommending that they, that they are awarded the two years at 100%, but only for the second floor improvements, because the first floor improvements were CO'd prior to their application to the EDC. So the EDC is recommending 100% for two years for the second floor improvements, and that the deferral will be, begin on October 1st after they receive their certificate of occupancy, which will probably happen over the next few months. So that means the deferral will, will start October 1st of next year. The estimated deferral amount per year is $20,276.39, so over two years, that'll be a total of $40,552.78. Mike, did you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
Oh, uh, you know, I think we have met with Mark Carol Ouzie on this, and also he understands that this is only reflective of the CEO, not including what he's already, the, the CEO that was issued for the first floor, for the liquor store.
Okay.
Why didn't they apply sooner, so they could have it for the whole building? Were they aware of the possibility of it?
They did apply earlier, however, they, they changed their application early this year, and so once they changed their application, they were already in the process of building the first floor and acquiring their CO. So by the time they applied for their CO, applied for the deferment, they had already received a CO for the first floor.
Oh, so that part was already done?
Correct.
Yes.
And that made the, that made that section ineligible at that point, correct?
Correct.
Under, under.
That's correct.
Per the ordinance.
Yep.
All right.
Yes.
Well, to, to, to open our, formally open our discussion, I'll put a motion on the floor that we grant the two-year deferral on the second floor improvements in the amount, total amount of $40,552.78, as recommended by the Economic Development Commission. Is there a second? Second by Rich. Okay, so for, we have a motion on the floor, and floor is still open for discussion. Richard Paul, do you guys have any questions?
But this, this is what, the new building, the second floor of the new building on the corner of Chestnut and Greenwood?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay. Rich, do you have any other questions?
No, that, that was the question I had asked before we made the motion, yeah.
Okay.
Let me ask, Janice, is the anticipated tenants of that, is this gonna be the Carol Ouzie Corporation up there? Or is this just gonna be a standard rental?
Right now, they have not, um, they don't have tenants for the upstairs that they have communicated to us. It's being outfitted for office, but in terms of tenants, we haven't received any information on who those tenants will be.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, guys?
Yeah, Matt, this is gonna sound real picky, but I, I think you ought to change the motion to read that it represents the assessment under the current mill rate of these amounts of monies, because what could happen is the assessment could change next year, not the assessment, but the tax rate could change, and then you may end up with a problem, said it was gonna be $40,000, and it's not, it's supposed to be for assessments.
Okay, all right. All right, how, how should I rephrase that then, just as?
Just say that it, it represents the freezing of, of the assessment, which is represented by, under the current assessment of the $40,000 and change, whatever it is.
Okay.
He knows that that's what it is, it's the assessment. You know, at some point, we may run into a problem where we have a reassessment, you know, the road in 2020, we're gonna have a reassessment if we have something hanging out, could be a real problem, so.
Okay. All right, Dan, did you capture that? Okay, so moved, and Paul, you're still seconding that, right? Rich seconded, okay. Okay, well, thank you for that, Marty, that's a good catch. Any other discussion on this motion? In hearing none, I'll try your minds, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. Thank you, Mike and Janice. Mike, as always, Happy New Year, it's good to see you again, and keep up the good work, you know, keep the park filled as best we can.
Yeah, we will.
So moving on to item number seven.
Thank you.
Have a great night, Happy New Year, Janice.
Happy New Year.
Consideration of municipal lease and, or lease or purchase agreement for solar panels. And Bill Crady and Gary Hale were with us a couple of months ago, and so Marty has reviewed the material, and I think, Gary, if I can, Gary or Adam, whoever wants to speak, if, I think, I think the, the best, the most advantageous presentation to the town was for the, the lease option, is that correct?
That's correct, Matt, yes.
Okay. Well, to open this up, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we accept and approve the lease, solar panel lease proposal from BCI Capital as recommended. And see, with a estimated finance cost of $1.313 million over a term of 15 years maturing in 2036 at a fixed interest rate of 2.65%. So is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Marty, did I cover that properly enough?
Yeah, it, yeah, I'm on, I didn't realize I was on.
Sorry.
Yeah, what, what you're signing is the proposal only, and then what's gonna happen is, after the proposal is submitted, I guess we're gonna have to have the Controller's Office fill out this application for equipment lease, and then you'll get the full documents, the lease, the escrow agreement, everything that's gonna be involved. I've spoken to, I don't see Bill here, I don't know if Gary knows, but I, I spoke to, or I sent an email to Bill telling him that I'd like to get a copy of the potential actual construction agreement, all right, and what I was informed by BCI, one of the representatives from BCI, is that they're going to include in their monies through lease the monies that have actually constructed as well, because it wasn't clear from what I saw. But all set, so I'll be getting that soon, and that's it.
Okay, well, let me, let me amend that motion then to say the proposed lease, put the word proposal in there, seeing as how that this isn't the final lease, this is, this is the proposal. Okay?
Are we gonna have to have a town meeting on this?
I have to see, I don't think we, we are. I think that what's gonna happen is, if we do, it's not gonna be for the whole thing, because what they're doing is, Rich, and, and there was some confusion on my part to start out with, is that BCI is going to actually gather up all the monies that we need for all the lease payments, the purchase of the equipment, and also to, for the construction itself, and then what's gonna happen is, they're gonna take the monies out of that when things come with the approval of the town, and then the town is gonna pay the lease payment every year. Now, the lease payment is, I forget what it is, it's, you can figure it out, it's, here it is, $107,020. There, there may come a time where we might have to have something, but I don't think we have to have anything right now for the $1.3 million that they're talking about.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to double check with you. I wasn't sure how that worked when we had Amoresco and all that other business.
Yeah, we, if you remember, we had a town meeting, we had a town meeting, remember, it was pretty contentious, if I remember right, um, but this is a little bit different in this case, because we're not actually fronting the money here. BCI is fronting all the money.
Okay, all right, understand.
Yeah, this was the same kind of arrangement as when we did the solar farm, which was, you know, a third party, so it was, there was no upfront money with that either. Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the proposal and move forward. It's getting to that time of year when solar panels could be constructed on the, on the two schools. Richard Paul, do you have any other questions?
But maybe just in, in your motion, do we need to say for the schools, for the two schools? Rockwell and Berry.
Well, it's actually Rockwell Berry, Rockwell Berry, there are three separate projects, Rockwell Berry and the Track and Field Center.
That, that, that was, if I can, that was another question that I had. Are we going to do, right now, the proposal at 1.3 million, that's for all three of the projects, but there was a question as to whether or not we're gonna do three separate projects, so one doesn't bog down the other, they can continue to go forward. And the last time I saw from Bill Crady, Bill Crady told me that they expect to discuss that at the next meeting, whether it should be broken down to three separate or one big one.
Okay.
There's Gary.
Yep, Gary, go ahead.
I don't wanna prolong the meeting, but they are, when we went after the Z-Rex on behalf of the town, we had to submit three separate applications. When it comes to solar projects, the utilities are into electric meters, and obviously there are three separate meters, one for each school and one for the recre, the track and whatever, I forget the name of the, the fitness center, field house, so there would be three separate, they are technically three separate projects.
Okay, all right. Very good. Okay, any other questions? And hearing none, um, so we have a motion to approve this proposal and move it forward. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion carries. Hey, Gary and Adam, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everybody.
Yep.
Happy New Year to you.
All right, uh, item number eight, um, consideration of appointments to the library board. This was the only one that uh, we had ready, uh, and that was because the people whose terms are expiring all desperately love the library board, they want to stay on, so they all contacted the Board of Selectmen's Office uh, independently of the party. So I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that all four of them are incumbents and there are no other applications. I did check with both party chairs to make sure they didn't have other people who wanted to uh, jockey for the positions. So I'm gonna put a motion on the on the floor that we reappoint Mary Spain, Linda Curtis, Connie Kaufman, and Tia Murphy to uh, fill the four vacancies that are expiring on the Library Board of Directors. There's seconds?
Second.
Second by Paul, any questions?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. And then again, we'll have the rest of the appointments at the next meeting, which I think will be on the nineteenth.
You might want to mention for minority representation, who's who?
Okay.
Linda Curtis.
Yeah, Linda Curtis is Republican, Mary Spain and Connie Kaufman are Democrats, Tia Murphy is unaffiliated. So no, no change to the composition of the board. Thank you for that, Marty.
Yeah.
Okay, item number nine, um, had a request from the town clerk just to try to clean up some of the ad hoc committees that no longer uh, meet, that their their purpose has been fulfilled and they uh, and so we need to formally vote to make them go away, to dissolve them. So I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we uh, dissolve the transfer, the ad hoc transfer station committee that was established several years ago to study the the concept of selling the transfer station. It seems like a long time ago. So I'll make a motion that we dissolve that committee. And respected it, okay? Any discussion?
It was a good committee.
Yeah. Um.
I mean, if there's anything that we learned, it was the fact that we didn't have to separate trash like they wanted to do initially.
Well, yeah, we'll see if that's that holds, that that's a, that's a very, we're gonna have some conversations about that in the upcoming meetings, because the the whole
What is HRRC changing their mind again?
Oh, no, 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 HR, no, I'll tell you what, HRA has done a fantastic job. Um, we are paying um, ten dollars a ton to remove recycling from our transfer station. Um, people who are towns that are not part of HRA or a similar consortium are paying ninety dollars a ton for the same thing.
Wow.
It's it's so that that, you know, since China stopped accepting recycle, single stream recycling from the US, actually from everywhere in the world, the markets have plummeted, so nobody's making money on recycling anymore, but at least we're not spending very much to get, to make it go away. Um, city of Boston, I think, no, I'm sorry, city of Stamford, um, three years ago, uh, was neutral. They were making enough money selling recycling, they're not part of a consortium like HRA. They were making enough money to break even, so it was not costing them anything for trash removal. That bill has gone up to over eight hundred thousand dollars, which is all coming out of taxpayers' pockets. It's it's something you're going to see the uh, legislature address this year with some uh, programs designed to try to reduce the amount of trash and 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 streamline recycling so that it's more profitable, but it's a big issue. Uh, we are very, very fortunate that we have HRA, because they have protected us from a lot of uh, these price increases uh, the way our contract is structured.
So I guess we can always resurrect the committee if necessary.
Oh, yeah, sure. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to dissolve that committee, those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
That motion carries. We're, I'll put a motion on the floor that we table fire commission, though such time as we have the language. There's a second? Okay, seconded by Rich, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that carries. Item number eleven, the motion on the floor that we establish the annual town uh, budget meeting for April fifth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM. Um, Marty, do I have to give a location in this motion or? No, okay, because who knows where it's gonna be? Could be by Zoom.
No, that's, no, that's the reason why, you don't know where it's gonna be.
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll establish it for April, Monday, April fifth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM. There's a second?
Wait, wait, do we have to say a time?
Seven P M. It's seven o'clock.
It does, okay, all right.
It's at seven, yeah.
Yep. Okay, so seconded by Paul, any discussion on that? And hearing none, I'll try your minds, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number twelve, charter revision.
Yes. Uh, you know, we're what, three months away roughly, and uh, I'd like to get going on this thing, because we have some some very important things that we've changed on the on the charter itself. And uh, with budget season coming up very rapidly, I I think we should start get getting into gear and and putting in first gear and start start working in that direction. I don't know how you feel about that. Because it's gonna be an important referendum item on, I guess, I I assume that you're planning to put this on the same time as the budget.
Well, that was the uh, that was the original plan. Um, you know, I I was actually gonna put this on the agenda for two weeks from now, but um, we might as well get the bad news out on the table, because we have a problem. And the problem is that back when we had the uh, presentation from the Charter Commission, you'll remember that this goes back about a year ago. And they presented to the Board of Selectmen, and then at a following meeting, we accepted their proposal. And what was supposed to happen then, uh, Marty, I think you, if you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, after that, we were supposed to have a town, not a town meeting, we were supposed to have a public hearing. And Marty, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that public hearing was supposed to be within thirty days, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, and that was about the time that the pandemic started to hit and we started to go into lockdowns and uh, the governor started issuing executive orders that there were gonna be no meetings. And so that to make a long story short, um, this, under normal circumstances, this proposal suffered a fatality because we did not follow the charter and we did not follow the timeline. And Marty and I have talked about this, uh, Marty and Nick Beatty, who is the counsel of uh, of the Charter Commission have talked about this. And what what I'm looking for is a way to to salvage this process, because I I don't know the legal ramifications of what we can do now. That's what, that's why I I didn't put it on tonight, because I, it was our intention to to move forward with this and and get this up on the boat. And you're right, we were gonna do that at the same time as the budget. So, um, Marty, do you have any other information at this time?
No, not at this time. I I I reviewed it several weeks ago, but I don't have I don't have any of my notes with me here, uh, regarding the same. I know that if I remember correctly, um, it was presented that we had to have the public hearing, but then the pandemic hit and that was the end of that, and it just got by everybody at that point.
Well, I I have a proposal for my colleagues. I uh, I wanna, I'm going to call the uh, not the Attorney General's Office, but the the county, the Governor's Council, um, Attorney Delena. Uh, Attorney Delena has been the author of of all of the executive orders uh, that that he reviews with the Office of Consumer Counsel and the Office of the Attorney General. Uh, and I'm going to find out if if there if there is a way for the Governor's Office to help us out with this. Um, because of the pandemic that we, you know, basically, I believe that there there could be a uh, an executive order that would cover this and it would allow us to proceed, or if not, that they would be willing to issue one under extraordinary conditions such as these. So, um, before the nineteenth, I I propose to contact the Governor's Office and speak with his general counsel and see.
I think that's a good idea, because uh, uh, definitely the the COVID crisis interfered with everything and under executive orders, you know, I I would think that we could get, it would, could be amended by the governor or Governor's Office, you know. It's it's of no fault of our own, but it's uh, we're a victim of circumstance.
Yep, that's that's true.
All right, so you're gonna plan on contacting and you'll 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 forward some information to us then.
Yep, I I did, I did reach out to the chair, to Nick Hoffman, I would, I wanted to explain this to him, um, you know, but I I didn't want to put off your motion tonight, Paul.
Yeah.
I, Nick and I haven't connected, but I'll, I'm sure I'll speak with him sometime this week.
Okay.
So, all right.
Matt, let's try to resolve this for the next meeting, so we can
Yes.
know one way or the other what we have to do.
Will do. I will uh, contact Mr. Delena, who, yeah, we've spoken so often, we're we're getting to be old friends.
Might be to our advantage.
Yep. All right, so I'll move on, so we'll, we will revisit this, it'll be on the next agenda. So item number thirteen, discussion of police station firing range, so Marty, can I can I impose on you to just give a brief recap of where we are legally with that? Yeah, how much, I don't know how much we can talk about, because some of this is
Yeah, there's still, there's still a possibility of a potential lawsuit still, but um, for sake of argument, the town has hired an engineering firm to look over a lot of it. And uh, they basically uh, have given the report. I think that the burning question that we have, though, is um, how can I put this? Uh, is there anything that can be done, all right, in order to make sure that the walls remain waterproof for more than a period of three or four years? That's the big issue right now. I mean, there's no sense in going forward and trying to get additional funds in order to have the firing range finished, when we don't know how to be able to do that with the walls the way that they are. And I've tried to keep Nancy apprised of what's happening. We've discovered that there are a couple of other things that might be uh, issues with the building itself, not having to do with the firing range, but because of the firm that was hired. So, and we're still in the process of doing that, there's a, you know, they're they're making suggestions now and we're gonna see where we go with them. Yeah, as you know, you hired other counsel, you hired outside counsel, Rick Robinson from Paul Conley. He's written a couple of letters that I know of, uh, to Downs Construction, and he's been the point person dealing with the engineering firm. Pretty much all I can say at this point.
Uh, by the way, Marty, you might not be aware of this, but uh, the engineering, uh, the engineer came last week and picked up more blocks for testing, some of the leftover blocks, and they're scanning the roof, they're doing the infrared scan tomorrow on Wednesday.
There's a, there's a lot of different issues, Paul, the big, still.
And the reason why, the reason why I brought this up is, I'll be honest with you guys, you know, I've got two engineers in my family. One is an industrial engineer, is responsible for uh, the overseeing of buildings, even in construction for state of Virginia, is an industrial engineer. Second one is the other engineer in my family, who is a civil construction engineer. And I've explained what's what's, you know, he's he's built hospitals, high rises, soccer stadiums, you know, he's got the credentials for everything in this particular arena. And as he's told me, he says, you know, essentially, they didn't follow uh, construction mandatory standards. That's what it comes down to, you know, and basically, you know, one thing we've got, we've got a defective building. And time is money. And then I bumped into uh, the chief of police, Steve Pugner. Uh, I guess it was Sunday morning over at Bethel Food. And he told me, uh, essentially, he says, you know, I wouldn't put any equipment in that building at all until we can absolutely be hundred percent sure that, uh, he says, you know, when we constructed it, the the thinking was the shooting range equipment was only, was roughly in the area of about six hundred and fifty thousand or a little bit more than that. He said, I hesitate to say where it's gonna be, it's probably in the seven digits already. You know, uh, this to me, and Marty, you're gonna have a hemorrhage when I state this, uh, this is punitive damages. You know, uh, well, no, we we're losing money.
Well, you're making comments about people that we haven't had a chance to talk to. So I think that's, you know, you can talk to whoever you want to talk to, but um, as far as I'm concerned, we've had several engineers reports, they've all come back different. There's nothing that points the finger at anybody, that's the problem, Paul. I mean, you gotta lose in case in court until we can figure something else out. That's what we're trying to do. And you know, I I don't want to spend any money, I don't think, as a taxpayer, and it certainly is a representative of the of this board, I think to try to move forward to do something with the firing range until the wall issue is resolved is ridiculous. And I know time is money, but it's something that's not easily resolved.
Now, you know, what my my concern is, it's, you know, I don't know how anybody else feels, we're, we seem to be dragging this thing out. And uh,
Yeah.
And I'd just like to put an end to this thing. Well, I'm sure we all do.
We are.
I, you know, let's, let me put it this way, Paul. If the town of Bethel wants to come up with money to permanently fix that wall, it'll be done tomorrow. But I don't think that's what you want. I think you want to know why is this wall leaking? For far, we've got different opinions as to why it's leaking, and I want somebody to step forward on the other side and say, we'll take care of it, here's what we'll do. And done that yet.
You haven't come to that point yet?
No, no, they haven't done that, you know, and I, we were all hoping that with getting outside counsel involved, who by way, he just had a hearing, an arbitration hearing with Downs Construction on another matter. All right, by getting somebody else on the outside involved, that we'd get better movement. Well, it's not moving as fast as anybody thought, let's put it that way. It's moving, but not fast enough, and I admit that.
No.
But I got, I don't, I mean, I I'm not an engineer either, I just know that somebody builds a block wall, there's not wall supposed to be coming through it, that's all.
We all know, you know.
Yeah. Well, Paul, let me, let me just uh, add, I, you know, I I feel your pain, I I agree with you, I agree with your your family members, I agree with everybody who's frustrated by this. It it, I know it appears that nothing's moving, but that's, a lot of that is because we have counsel involved and we can't really talk about it. Um, but you know, there have been multiple inspections, uh, as as I mentioned a minute ago. The engineer is still taking block samples to test them, to try to find the ones that were not constructed properly. Uh, we do have a proposed solution that I have discussed with the outside counsel, which I I'm not gonna uh, talk about on on a recording right now, because it's part of a legal negotiation, but you know, I I think we're closer to a resolution now than we were um, a little while ago, you know. It's the question, every, everybody agrees that there's one real easy way to fix this. The the main question is, how do we maneuver into a position where the taxpayers aren't saddled with that cost? And that's where
Exactly, I agree with you on that.
Yep. So we will, you know, uh, push forward, uh, the the roof scanning as part of this investigation, as I mentioned, is occurring tomorrow. Uh, we should have the results of that before the next meeting, so uh, let's, let's keep this on the front burner.
Yeah, but we still have, we still have a leak in the wall.
Yes, but you know, there's, they I don't know if you were aware of this, but there was a leak in the conference room, which they apparently have found and taken care of in the meantime. But that that's not what was causing the water, that's not part of the water problem in the, for what you call the firing range, so.
All right. All right, but just my comments, I says it's
I understand.
Don't blame you, it's okay.
All right.
Well, that concludes our agenda. Um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, that's seconded by Rich. All right, thanks, everybody. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
See you at the next meeting.
Yeah, good night.
Good night.
See you, see you tomorrow.